All right, it is six o'clock. It is Monday, March 21st. We'll call our meeting to order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the Republic of the United States of America, to the republic for which you stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let's start with the roll call then.
Simonsen, Rick Earl?
Yes.
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 Oh, he's on.
Oh. Callister?
Yes.
Coolman? Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
All right, next we have public participation. Is there anybody in the audience who want to get up and talk to the council? Okay, if not, we'll do regular presentations. And the first one tonight is from Police Chief Brendan Zaimet. It's the Police Department's annual report and goals.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, City Manager Bolt, MacCochut community members. Even in the midst of a pandemic, the public service can't stop. The people of this community count on us and the dedicated officers and dispatchers of the MacCochut Police Department continue to show their commitment this year. I won't trudge through every little detail as you guys obviously had read my report. As you can see, calls for service have gone up in the last two years. Citations and arrests are up from the previous year but are down from two years ago. And it's probably for a variety of reasons. Some of it can be staffing levels, proactive officers leaving or coming or going, and that sort of thing. On a personnel level, obviously, we lost two long-serving members of our family. Chief Coranda retired after 33 years and Kerry Jones retired after 15 years of service. I wish I could tell you that the personnel changes didn't ever stopped at that point, but we've actually had some turnover since the first of the year. I've been with the city for 21 years and I'm proud to say that I work with such dedicated employees. And the city is lucky to have them serving our community. Under the infrastructure and vehicles, I gave you a brief overview of those areas and I'll touch a little bit more on the infrastructure side. But if you have any questions, free to take those at the end of this as well. The community-based initiatives, those are something that aren't new. We've been doing many of those for years and years. We just don't publicize it a lot. So I was proud to share that, what the officers do, and they're happy to contribute to those areas, such as National Night Out, Shop of the Cop, and the No Shave November thing. Started as a four-month period where officers could grow facial hair and we donate money to people in the community or a worthy cause. And it's kind of grown to an all-year-round facial hair policy, but the officers continue to donate that so we can continue to give back to the community. So in my goals, I tried to list it out in zero to six months, six to 12, and 12 to 20 months. Some of them were already in place or started before I was ever around. And that's the ISICS radio system. That's moving along pretty smoothly. The councils have been installed into dispatch. And hopefully by the end of summer, the officers will be equipped with their portable radios and the squad cars will be equipped with the mobile ones. So we'll have communication capabilities with all the surrounding areas in the State Patrol. One of the things that led to this was we were on a scene in Clinton County where there was an officer-involved shooting and we couldn't talk to the other officers that were not more than 100 yards away from us. So that's why this is a really important project to get completed. And although it's a costly one, it'll be worth it. The other thing would be the critical incident stress debriefing. This goes for officers and dispatchers. So many times we answer critical calls that put a lot of stress on us and it's not as simple as we go home and we forget about it. I want to develop a peer program or some sort of program where we can have them have an outlet for that stress in a positive way. The building improvements, those are already started. Put some fresh coats of paint on a couple offices, that's going to continue. And I think we need to take pride in our own building and as we ask the community to take pride in theirs. You'll see some updates to the outside. We're going to get some new signage that clearly identify us as the Police Department. One of the misconceptions is when the jail gets built, we go to. That's not true. We're going to stay there, so we want to be recognizable and clearly identifiable as the MacCochut Police Department. We're going to increase our social media presence and that's going to be done with a joint effort through the city, through their own social media page, and try to promote us in the positive things we do. Staffing levels, my goal is to have this completed by the end of the year and be fully staffed. At one time in dispatch, we were down to four dispatchers to run a 24/7 service. 24/7, four people. It left very little time for them to get time off. And again, that's why I'm so proud to work with dedicated individuals because they stepped up time and time again. Officers right now, as I said, we had some updates, but we're down two officers and one on injury. So that's 25% of my workforce. We just hired a former officer, Corey Purtle, that used to work with us. He started today, so that'll help alleviate some of that stress in that overtime budget. Another goal that I have is the Police Reserve Program. The Police Reserve Program's been around, I think, since 1980 or in the 80s. And it is a wonderful program. So many of us officers got our starts there. One of the things I want to do is I want to make it to be able to be utilized to its best possible potential. And that's getting these officers through a field training program so me as the supervisor in the city and the officer can feel fully comfortable in helping be a backup officer and help keep maybe multiple people on a shift when necessary. Because especially during the weekends, we run very shorthanded from 3:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. There's typically only one officer on. So I'm hoping when we get this program up and running, we'll be able to utilize the reserve officers to cover a little bit more and be that backup officer when necessary. With the community service projects, I stated it in the No Shave November thing. One of the things that's come out of that is we want to start a MacCochut Scholarship Fund. And there should be one this year for seniors. And then we will also continue to donate whatever money's left to worthy organizations. We haven't picked anybody right now, but it sounds like the officers are leaning towards Relay for Life is one of them. The other thing that I've noticed is food insecurity is obviously a pretty big deal all throughout the country and in our own community. A really simple program is what I proposed is doing it as a Resting Hunger. And it's a simple food collection where we're out front of a local business and we try to fill a squad car. It gives us some positive PR and gets us to meet the community in a positive way. And it's also another way to give back. Another one is the Illegal Drug Take Back and Immunity Program. It's something where if somebody's seeking help and wants to try to kick their habit, they can come to the Police Department free of fear of prosecution and we will try to set them up with an organization to get them help so they can kick their habit. So if somebody out there needs help, wants help, feel free to call the Police Department. You can turn in your drugs. We will happily take them. You won't be charged and we will set you on the right path to recovery. This program isn't in place yet, but even with it not fully functioning, we'd be willing to do that and we can make connections with people and help them out if they need help. The other thing is with my staffing is I think we can be we can be a more efficient organization with the implementation of an investigator position. And that's something that I want to shoot for in a 12- to 20-month goal as well. Right now, I'm kind of putting a Band-Aid on that by utilizing my Assistant Chief role to lead those investigations and try to keep them more organized. The last thing we want to do is see cases fall through the cracks because of whatever the reasons may be. So I think that can make us be very successful as a department and lead to more cases being solved. So in conclusion, I want to say that I am proud of the dedicated dispatchers and officers that I work beside. We will continue to work with our community, build relations and problem solve. I want to thank you guys for giving me the opportunity to lead the Police Department. I want council members, citizens of this community to know that they're always welcome at my Police Department. If they want to call in, stop in and sit down for a talk, I'm happy to listen to your concerns. With that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. If not, I'll let you continue with the rest of your meeting.
I just want to say that I appreciate the time you gave me the other day, that what he just said, that you're welcome to go down there and bring up anything with him and spend the day. He gave me a complete tour of the police station and all. And I recommend everybody go down there and check it out one time. Thanks again.
Thank you.
I have a question. It's not about you, it's about the department, the building that you're in right now. When the sheriff moves out, do you know what's going to happen to his half of it?
I do not.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thanks, Brendan.
Okay, next we have Josh Bolt and Frank Ellens with an update on the East Platt Project.
I don't know if they're going to put it up on the screen, but before you, is this what happened? Frank, you have that in front of you?
Yep.
Katie can get up on the screen, great. If not, this is probably one of the best graphics and I'll let Frank hit a home run on this one.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you probably realized today, Platt Street has started. Thursday of last week, we had our first progress meeting and our first pre-con meeting with the contractor and all the subs. I'm going to keep this really short. Today, tomorrow, and more likely on Wednesday, they're going to be milling the whole project area from Main Street down to basically in front of the onward center. But what I mean by milling, they're going to be milling off the blacktop overlay that's been on the old brick and/or the old concrete. From basically Main to probably down by Walnut, it was brick. And then from there to the rest of the way, it was like originally concrete. So they're milling the blacktop off now. It'll take a few days off. And then Monday of next week is when the underground starts and that's when the full detour will go into effect. Katie's still trying to get that up, but I can speak to the... This is going to be done in three phases. The like first phase will go from Main to Clark. Clark is where the Soil Conservation Building is. Then the next phase is going to go from there down to basically in front of C and R Tire. And then the last phase will be from C and R Tire down to the onward area. This here east side is total reconstruction. As you probably remember, the west side was total from Main to Vermont. And then from Vermont out to the highway, it was a mill and fill with sidewalk improvements and some underground like utility improvements. On the east side, it's going to be total like reconstruction. If you remember, three or four years ago, help me out, Jeff, we had like 10 water main breaks on the east side of Platt Street. So that's one of the small reasons that we're doing a complete reconstruction of the east side. Those are the different phases. For everybody that's watching, this will be... We're going to do it in the three phases. The one, we're working in one phase. The other two phases will not be worked on. So you will let all the business owners and property owners will have complete access to their properties. Then when we, then before we move to the next phase, the previous phase will have the first lift of blacktop on. So there will be a hard surface on. Then we'll just move forward to the second and third phase. Then when all three phases are done, that's when we do the final lift of blacktop. There's like three lifts of blacktop on this project. The only time, and I want to make this clear to everybody because we always keep saying you will always have access to your property, the only time you will not have access to your property is when the final lift of blacktop goes on. There will be about a probably a three, four, or five-hour timeframe that when we're paving in front of your property, you will not be able to get in. We did a change order last like year to make this happen by having flaggers. We're going to start on one side, pave the whole one side, go back, start on the other side and pave that whole side. So there will be time at the end of the project for maybe a half a day, you will not have access to your property. But other than that, you will always have access. Everybody will have access to their property. Getting back to the west side, you can probably know it's kind of dark driving down the road. They only have half their light poles in yet. They're going to start probably putting them in next week when the full detour goes into effect. They also have to do a bunch of sodding on the west side, things like that. We are going to tweak some of the like stoplights or some of the signal lights, add on some seconds, remove some seconds. We've kind of had a kind of a history now of the traffic flow. So there's like still work done on the west side, but that'll be done under traffic. We're not going to close the west side off anymore. I guess with that, do you guys have any questions? I know the Public Works Committee, we kind of discussed this already.
Frank, when do you have your weekly Platt Street meetings?
Good point. On the first and third Thursdays of every month at 8:00 in the morning, anybody's welcome to come into City Hall and listen to the update.
I wanted to present this to council here for reference if you get calls from anyone in your wards. As I said, it's the best visual and logistical schedule that I've seen so far. And Frank's crew and the contractors are hoping to stick to this. We're told the utilities are easier to work around as opposed to the west street side. So this will be on Facebook tomorrow morning. It'll be on our website tomorrow morning. We're willing to show it here first so that everyone can get a picture on this of what's coming. And it's certainly started at this point.
If any of the councilmen or Mr. Mayor, if you guys have any residents that get ahold of you and they have a complaint, just give me a holler and we'll address it.
Is Chip Fry doing the construction down on the side?
Correct.
They're going to do it again?
Yep.
Do you have anything else for Frank? Okay, thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Okay, we move on to item six, it's our consent agenda. And we do have one change in the consent agenda. It's item J where it says subrecipient agreement for the 2022 CBGBG grant that should be architectural agreement. The other items are the minutes of the March 7th meeting are bills payable through March 21st, 2021. That's in the amount of $228,273.29. Our February monthly bill report, financial report. KJ's Convenience, a renewal of a Class E liquor license and Sunday sales. We have a resolution approving the subrecipient agreement for a 2022 CBGBG CV grant with Innovate 120. We have a resolution approving a contract for a 2020 CDBG CV grant administration to ECIA for the project 120, Innovate 120. A resolution approving the subrecipient grant for the 2020 CDBG CV Public Facilities Grant for the YMCA facility. Resolution approving a contract for a 2020 CDBG CV grant administration to ECIA. A resolution providing for the duplication of benefits policy for the CDBG CV Housing Conversion Grant. Item J, resolution approving the architectural agreement for the 2022 CDBG CV grant with Robert Abbott for housing conversions at 138 South Main Street. And finally, a resolution approving the Farmers Creek Fire Protection Extension. Okay, we got a motion by Callister?
Second.
Seconded by Lyon, any discussion? And take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Callister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, let me move on to our public hearings. First public hearing is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year 2022, '23 proposed budget and CIP. Josh?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, the time's officially here to adopt a budget. We have to do so before April 1st. We've spoken with the Finance and Personnel Committee on February 15th and we gave a preview of this on March 7th. Your basic rate here comes in at 13.89, practically the exact same as last year's rate. For various reasons, the levy dropped 6.21% overall. We believe that this is a fair ask of the community. It places our general fund at about 29.4% at a predicted reserve fund balance policy for the next year. Helps plan for good capital expenditures out of our road use tax fund. We predict to spend $280,000 out of that. And that's drastically up from a couple of years ago where we spent $174,000. So we're looking forward and past Platt Street and thinking about what do we do with residential streets and some of the other areas that need addressed. And we'll be spending that money and increasing that spending as time moves on as well. So it's our objective to meet those budget targets that we've set. Our local option sales tax has been steady and steady upward and good news. And as of today, it's showing signs of no weakness, which we're happy about. There's many reasons behind this, but I think everyone across our Budget Planning Committee, staff, council members that were involved, and anyone that was willing to provide input along the way here, we're happy with the way this turned out. It wasn't easy. I came in on January 11th and normally this process starts in November, December with department heads and some work was done before I got here. But it was a good exercise for us all and we're going to continue to improve that budget process as we look into next year too. So if you have any questions about anything you're seeing in the agenda, the backup packets regarding budget and CIP, I think I would be happy to answer any of those questions now.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Well, before we do that, anybody in the audience want to talk about this? Okay. We got a motion by Callister, seconded by Lyon. You have no discussion, then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Callister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. The next item is Property Tax Levy Proposal. That levy is $2,786,681 with a 13.89987 rate. And do we do A with that too?
No, Tom, that's all included.
Oh, that was all included in the whole thing? Okay.
I think you're just happy with that rate, Mayor.
I am. All right, item B is a public hearing regarding the CDBG CV Housing Conversion Grant for 138 South Main Street.
Thank you, Mayor. With us in the audience tonight is Kelly Brown. She's the Director of JCEA. She put a lot of hard work into this agenda and all those CDBGs comes out of her office. So I'm going to let her have the floor and explain what's going on here in this agenda.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, City Staff. As Josh said, I'm Kelly Brown with JCEA, formerly Kelly Brown of ECIA. So I was a little face on the screen six months ago that was going through the CDBG facade grants for the east side and then talking you through some claims and things. Anyway, I apologize because there's nine questions that have to be addressed through the public hearing and it takes a while, but it's a requirement for the submitted of the grant, so bear with me. So one of the questions is how the needs for the proposed activities were identified. So the interior of this historical building, this is 138 South Main, I heard actually the other day that it was maybe the fire was in the 70s. So it was quite a while ago and they say that there's still some debris in that building where you can see that there was a fire. So it's exciting now that the proposal is to convert that building. So the whole building will be used to its best potential. They have plans for commercial on the main floor and then two apartments in the upper story. So this sat empty until the previous owners purchased the property in late 2019 with plans to renovate the main level into a commercial space with the potential to add apartments to the upper level. The demand for workforce rental apartments in Jackson County and specifically to MacCochut was identified in a 2015 Housing Needs Assessment. The assessment has been recently updated in 2021 and will be adopted in 2022 as a Housing Action Plan. The plan identifies the need to elevate the quality of existing housing stock in MacCochut through housing rehabilitation to provide additional housing to Jackson County and to partner with the State of Iowa Housing Programs to encourage affordable housing. When the city was looking for owners who were interested in participating in the MacCochut CDBG facade program, they readily agreed. Jackson County Economic Alliance contacted the previous owners when the downtown housing grants and the CDBG CV grants became available. The CDBG CV Housing Conversion Grant is an opportunity, excuse me, to address one of the priorities identified in the draft Housing Action Plan. After careful consideration, the previous owners determined that they would not be able to continue with the renovation of the building beyond the facade. JCEA had already been working with Robert Abbott for the last few years and was very aware of his passion and ability to make a difference in MacCochut. It was just in the last month that the pieces fell into place and it was determined that it would make good business sense to pick up where the previous owners had left off. Given that the CDBG CV grant opportunity is still in place and seeing the need for and the success of the MAE apartments in MacCochut and the high demand for rental units in MacCochut, Abbott made the decision to begin with the construction of two apartments in the second story instead of starting with a commercial space on the main level of the building. Next question, how will the proposed activities be funded and sources of funds? Robert Abbott will take advantage of the opportunity to apply for a 7,500 local upper story renovation incentive from the city of MacCochut. If funded, this will reduce the match provided by Abbott. Abbott is pledging the full 20% of the local match in the unlikely event that the city of MacCochut does not approve the upper story renovation grant. Abbott is purchasing the building and paying for the architect with his own funds. The renovation costs less 20% local match will be paid for through the CDBG grant. They actually are anticipating to, are planning to submit the grant by April 1st. Worst-case scenario, the grant has to be submitted by April 30th, 2022 in order to meet the deadlines for the May 30th, 2023. The requested amount of the funds will be $500,000. The funds requested that will benefit persons of low and moderate income will be 100%. There's two apartments and both will be made available to and will be occupied by low and moderate income tenants. The activities are conducted at 138 South Main Street. The plans to minimize displacement of persons and businesses as a result of funded activities, well, currently the building's unoccupied, so there is not anticipated to be any displacement of any people. But again, we have to say this, the project will allow, if indeed there is displacement occurs, that we will comply with, the city of MacCochut will comply with the Uniform Relocation Act in Section 104, Subsection D. The nature of the proposed activities consists of the construction of two one-bedroom apartments in the second story of the building located at 138 South Main. More specifically, we have a removal of a few walls and floor coverings from a previous remodel attempt. New walls, doors, drywall, flooring are needed for each apartment as well as new bathrooms, finishes, plumbing fixtures, and vanities. New kitchens will include cabinets and Energy Star appliances. Each apartment will include in-unit laundry facilities with Energy Star washers and dryers. All new plumbing and electrical will be ran throughout the building. Those are the nine points that we have to cover again as part of the CDBG CV grant application process. But before I finish, I just wanted to thank you. I know that even though the city of MacCochut is not pledging anything financially to these projects, the amount of time that staff puts into this through the agenda and you as a council that you still go through all the hearings, you still have to approve the claims, that administratively, there is a time investment. And we thank you for your time investment because it pays back exponentially with the work and the progress that you've seen on... the work and the progress that you've seen on Main Street so far and what the other grants, you know, have offered the city of Macokota. So thank you for that. We appreciate that. We appreciate your investment in yourself.
Okay, well, thank you. And I'm also impressed that you can say that CDBG CV thing so fast every time.
If anyone has any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
I'm drawing a blank. I know where this is, but what was that before they started tearing the facade off at 138?
It's been empty so long, I don't remember.
Just empty for a long time? Okay, all right. Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Okay, we got a motion. We got a second by Collister, motioned it, seconded by Lyon. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
All right, we made a total business. Item A is a resolution approving fiscal year 2022 and 2023 proposed budget and CIP.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Collister, seconded by Lyon. No discussion? Then take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item B is an ordinance amending Title III Community Protection, Chapter III Traffic Code, Subchapter III G Stop and Yield Intersections, Section I Stop Intersections of the Local Code of Ordinances, First Reading. And I believe these, this involves Summit and Western Avenue, right? Do we have any discussion or motion?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion by Holm?
Second.
Seconded by Lyon. Any discussion?
I think it'd be crazy once those signs are down to put them back up, but that's just me.
Yeah, I've gotten several calls, including one today from someone who lives basically right there where the stop sign is. And she has a handicapped daughter who's wheelchair bound and she needs to back into her driveway. And she said since the signs have come down, it's been incredibly difficult for her to accomplish that. And, you know, as someone who drives through that intersection every day, you see now the way the speeds have picked up and all of that. And it's just difficult to watch. There's a school bus that lets kids off there and there's like, people are just flying. So I'm all in favor of putting that sign back up.
And I know there's somebody out there who thinks the sign on Summit Street is still there. And they'll see a car coming on Summit and they'll believe that car is going to stop and they'll pull out in front of it and it's a potential-
Yeah, nearly hit Thursday night.
Potential accident, yeah.
Josh? Josh, why wasn't this directed to a safety meeting?
Can you repeat, Corey?
Why wasn't this directed to public safety again like it was requested?
That was based on the council having some pretty firm desires at the last meeting to put it on. That was not intentional to bypass the Public Safety Committee. But I think that from what we've heard from the public and from what we heard last council meeting that we at least felt comfortable with moving forward on that concern.
You know, everyone I've talked to, once the paper flat out blatantly made it ridiculous when they said stop signs coming down on Summit. Everyone I discussed with was under the impression they were all coming down. When I told them what the plan was and what was going on, nobody, and I live in the same neighborhood as Mark, nobody has approached me yet on those signs. I had one text before the second call and yet I've heard nothing. I drive that road every day. I don't see that speed. And one, stop signs aren't meant to control speed. They're meant to control traffic and the flow of traffic. It's not a speed bump. If you want to slow speed down on Summit, then build some speed bumps, in my opinion. But that isn't what they're meant to do. So I'd be more than happy to talk this later. I mean, no one has contacted me other than Mr. Tampier months before we got to this and I had one anonymous person. And then anyone else that stopped me when I've explained what the process is and where we're going, it's been no issue, so. I don't, I don't. I think it's crazy. We've spent, now it's been a week and a half. Traffic flow is arranged back there. People aren't stopping. I mean, I haven't seen anyone pull out. I did watch a squad car stop there the one day, you know, after the sign. But I haven't seen anything. And I do watch Western now. When I drive by, I want to make sure that guy's not pulling out. So I do watch it, but that's defensive driving, so.
Yeah, I've only gotten one call and it was several months ago and that is it. As far as I know, we've had no accidents out there. Has there been an increase in speeding tickets or anything? So there's no sign, we have no, no numbers to back up putting that sign back in. So I really, really, if people are serious about wanting that, we need to go back to public safety. Let's get a car counter out there, count traffic. Let's get some numbers and some, you know, evidence on whether we really need it or not. Let's actually put the work in.
When, when we took the stop sign down, I did put an email out to all my people to pay extra attention out there and specifically for speed. I haven't seen any increase in tickets, but again, we're not everywhere all the time. There's always that one vehicle. I too have seen cars speed through there, but I've also seen cars drive normal in the speed limit. So it's whatever the council decides, but there's not been an increase in accidents. I have had a couple of people right away when the stop signs were taken down express the same thing that they, the vehicle on Western pulled out in front of them when they had the right of way. But again, that comes down to defensive driving and just them not making, understanding that the stop signs are gone, so.
I think that sign helps. It says cross traffic doesn't stop or whatever.
Yep.
I still think it needs to be evaluated after that. And I saw the comments from you with the subdivision.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Monday, when the full detour goes into effect, why don't we like evaluate it starting next Monday and see what the traffic, what, what the increased traffic actually does?
When you have a motion and whatever announced.
Yeah, we got a motion on the table. Need to vote on it and then vote to rescind it or how do we do this?
Well, if it goes down, it comes from the-
It goes down, I guess.
I mean, then it can go to committee or whatever. I don't.
I would suggest voting no or pulling it off the agenda. And then we'll go to public safety with the research that's needed.
Well, let's do it the right way and have the vote.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Simonson?
Can you read their motion again, please?
This is a motion approving the first reading of this ordinance.
Putting stops in it's back.
To leave it removed or to add it back?
To add the stop sign back.
Okay, thank you. My vote is no.
Rick Earl?
No.
Lyon?
Yes.
Uh, Collister?
No.
Good?
No.
Holm?
Yes.
Okay, the motion fails four to two. Our net order of business is new business and it is a resolution approving an agreement between Macokota and Clinton County for reciprocating to Bloomfield Township or representing, excuse me, Bloomfield Township.
This is, this is a product of the U.S. Census from 2020. Some record cleanup. City of Macoke would have faced a bit of this as well. Clinton County reached out to us. They have a property that's within city limits that belongs to their county. This is population zero on that square. What this does is send, if there was any population there, to voting precincts in the Bloomfield District, the Delmar Voting Precinct. So it affects no one. Your recommendation, I'm sorry, your support is recommended on this vote here, please.
So moved.
Second.
We got a motion by Collister, seconded by Good. Any discussion? And then take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Item B is a resolution allowing McClure Engineering to file a grant application with the FAA for design of the runway.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the 10%, I'm sorry, this is allowing the grant application to the FAA based on the 10% local share we had for the January 17th action we had. So with what this does, it just authorizes the engineering firm to go ahead and submit plans to the FAA for the design portion of extending the runway.
Okay, may I have any discussion here?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved by Good, seconded by Holm. Go ahead and take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yeah.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Item D is a resolution approving community development block grant coronavirus application for the city of Macokota housing conversion project at 138. What?
C.
Oh. Okay, a discussion and possible motion authorizing payment to construction materials testing for services related to the airport runway in the amount of $7,810. We got a motion by Collister?
Second.
Seconded by Good. Go ahead and take the roll.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson? Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
All right, now we get to a resolution approving the community development block grant coronavirus application for the city of Macokota housing conversion project at 138 South Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Lyon, seconded by Collister. Do we have any discussion here? Take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item E is a resolution providing for a contract with ECIA for grant administrative services for the CDBG CV housing conversion grant at 138 South Main Street.
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Lyon, was seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion? Then take the roll.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item F is a resolution providing for a subrecipient agreement between the city of Macokota and Robert Abbott for a project at 138 South Main Street. Do you need add?
No, these are all related to much of what we've talked about, so I don't want to waste anyone's time here. We know it's an extreme benefit to the city and I hope you all vote yes.
So moved.
Motion by Good, second. Seconded by Rick Earl. If we have no discussion, take the roll.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item G is a resolution authorizing purchase of 30 firefighter boots and pairs of boots and 30 firefighter helmets in the amount of $23,550.
So moved. Second.
Was moved by Collister, seconded by Holm?
No, seconded by Holm. Simultaneous second. It's all third.
Give it to him now, all right. Seconded by Lyon. Go ahead and take the roll.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
That motion passes. Item H is a resolution accepting a bid in the amount of $5,270 submitted by Kelly Tree Farm for the purchase of 28 trees for the 2022 Fall Tree Planning Program.
So moved.
You want to tell us what this is?
This is, the tree board gets a budget out of the general fund to help enhance the city's arbor footprint in town. That comes in the form of removing dead trees and dangerous trees and planting new trees. This is the planting new trees portion of that, all budgeted, all within budget. And that $5,270 is the lowest of three options. We recommend that purchase.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion by Holm?
Second.
Seconded by Good. If we have no discussion, then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. Item I is a resolution authorizing the city of Macokota and Gil's Tree Service LLC to enter into a tree and stump removal services agreement in the amount of $16,870. Okay, moved by Collister?
Second.
Seconded by Holm. Do we have any discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Collister?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
All right, we made it to item 10. By the way, that motion did pass. We made it to item 10. Reports and communications. Do we have anything from any city council members?
Just want to remind everybody the MPA group from Iowa City is going to be here Wednesday. You should have all gotten an email from me today with the time you're scheduled for your interview. The interviews are here in the council chambers. So look forward, I think they're looking forward to meeting you all and getting to see Macokota.
Okay, anybody else? City manager have anything?
We covered most of it for the Platt Street end. I've been meaning to say it a couple of times now that the fire department has had kind of a busy month or two here. They've been in the paper and had a couple of bad fires. They respond on a volunteer paid on-call basis. And, and their membership is somewhat low compared to what they could be. So if anyone's listening out there or perhaps, you know, can convince someone to join the fire department, it's a great group. It's partially paid for their trainings and on-call. And I think it would be a very commendable service to the city of Macokota if anyone's interested. So I want to make that plug for everyone in town.
Okay. We have no executive session, so might entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Collister? Good was second. Go ahead and take the roll.
Good?
Yes.
Holm?
Yes.
Simonson?
Yes.
Rick Earl?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister?
Yes.
Were adjourned.